Okay, it's 9:02 in Canberra, so we will start proceedings. I think it's lovely to see you all as close to face-to-face as we can get at the moment. Thank you for joining us today. If you haven't seen me on Zoom before, my name is Lauren Murray, and I'm a senior legal officer in the Australian Attorney General's Department. I'm assisting the Pillon Cybercrime Working Group to deliver the cyber fundamentals courses. We are very pleased to welcome you to the first Zoom session for this course. And this is the first opportunity for both classes to get together, meet each other, and work on a case study fact scenario. The session we've prepared for you today is the first of three sessions which we will hold over the next month. There are two more sessions on the 14th of October and the 28th of October, so please feel free to put those in your diaries if you haven't already. The ultimate goal of these case study sessions is for everyone to gain a shared understanding of how the digital forensic content you are studying is applied to a fact scenario that you might come across in real life. By working through this case study from investigation through to prosecution, we are hoping this will firstly give you the opportunity to learn more about the challenges that your counterparts, prosecutors or police, are dealing with in their professional lives. And secondly, to help to identify where more collaboration and a shared approach to these issues can help when you're working on cases involving digital evidence in the future. The fact scenario we've prepared, which hopefully you've had an opportunity to read through over the past week, is similar to the case study that participants would normally work through at the Pillon Cybercrime Workshops, which three have been held in previous years. However, we're all a little more used to Zoom these days, hopefully, so we're trying a different approach. At this stage of the course, we're hoping that you will be up to the fifth module, which I will just bring up on the slide. There we go. So we've worked through some introductory issues in the last five weeks, and we should be up to identifying digital evidence. However, please don't worry if you've been busy or family commitments or anything have meant that you haven't yet completed that module. This is intended to be a general case study where everyone's experience will be relevant at some stage of the process. We encourage you to share what you know and cooperate and just have a discussion about finding the best pathway forward. I want to introduce our facilitator for today. We are delighted to welcome John Peacock, Senior Investigator in the Digital Child Exploitation Team at the New Zealand Department of Internal Affairs. John has significant professional experience working on a range of digital evidence formats, and we've been privileged to host him for several cyber events over the past two years. If you've accessed the members' content in the Pillon website, you may have seen his previous presentations for cyber fundamentals and cyber intermediate courses. So with that, and without further ado, I will hand over to John. Over to you, John, and thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, and welcome everybody. Good morning, everybody, and it's a great privilege for me to be here today to facilitate the session. It's a great opportunity for one and all to get together to discuss the training that you are going through. I can see from the modules that you've undertaken that it is a very interesting arena and an interesting piece of study to be working through. I have been working in the Digital Child Exploitation Team from DIA in New Zealand since the very early 90s. I have covered areas from online covert investigations through to undertaking cyber investigations, and I am qualified in a range of various forensic products. So the operating model that our unit has enables us to have a broad range of experience and capabilities in the area of child exploitation content investigations. And while our area or our mandate is slightly different to the particular scenario we're going to work through today, I believe it gives us a very good set of fundamentals that allow us to speak to the critical points of this case study. In terms of digital evidence detection and security and presentation, these things are incredibly important for these cases because they are the principal connection between the offence and the prosecution of that offending. If we don't have our procedures and our processes done correctly, any court case that we bring may fall over at the first hurdle. So getting things right and the location of digital devices and digital evidence allows us to find the evidence of the offending. It may also identify additional areas of offending that we may not have realized were present. The ways in which we seize, handle, analyse, and present that evidence are all critical in terms of meeting the needs and requirements of your legal systems and making sure that any case we run is successful when it gets to court and doesn't fall over because of the work that we have failed to do or done inappropriately or inefficiently. So the case scenario that we're going to work through today is one that enables us to work together and come up with ideas around the types of evidence, the types of processes and approaches we take, and the methods of accessing that information and basically a procedure through a cybercrime matter. So I just wanted to again echo Lauren's comments and encourage everybody to participate and collaborate with your classmates. The way we learn best is to learn from each other, and one of the best methods of learning is case studies in this example. So again, I would encourage you to fully engage in this exercise. So I know that some information has been provided through. I just wanted to read through the scenario so we can get to start on looking at what the cases we are looking at, and I hope that we have shared this with you previously. So Maria, who is 15, and Kai, who is 17, both live in the fictional country called Oceania. They have been in a relationship for a few months. They met through Kai's friend Bob, who is 18. One day when Bob was hanging out with Kai at his house, Bob downloaded and installed hacking software onto Kai's laptop to capture all of his social media and passwords. This software was discreet, so Kai did not notice anything. A few days later, the hacking software sent all of Kai's passwords to Bob's phone, including his Facebook password. Bob's Wi-Fi was down at home, so he went to the library to use one of their computers. He logged into Kai's Facebook and pretending to be him messaged Maria asking for nude pictures. Maria and Kai had previously exchanged nude pictures of themselves online, so Maria took some more photos on her phone and sent them to Kai on Facebook Messenger. Once Bob received the photos on Kai's account, he uploaded them to a website called explicit.com, which illegally holds sexually explicit pictures. Explicit.com paid Bob for providing those pictures. To ensure Kai didn't find out what happened, Bob deleted Kai's Facebook account, logged off the library computer, and went home. Sometime later, Maria found out that the pictures were circulating online from a mutual friend, and she immediately broke up with Kai, who insisted he didn't know anything about them and hadn't shared them any further. Kai tried to log into his Facebook account to find out what happened, only to discover it had been deleted. Noticing that Maria was rightly upset, her parents found out what had happened and made a complaint to the police. The police arrested Kai and brought him to the station for questioning. Further investigations following the interview with Kai uncovered the ISP address of the library computer, which was used to upload the photos. Further inquiries at the library led police to Bob. When he sees the police walking up to his address, he quickly deletes the passwords and the explicit.com app from his phone, which he has used to view the pictures several times since he uploaded them. So I just want to open up the first exercise by having just a general discussion, if we can, about the devices that we believe will be of interest in this inquiry to our investigators and to our forensic team. So happy to open the floor to anyone who would like to start that conversation.
And I just might jump in to say that please make sure that you unmute yourself or raise your hand, and we can call on you.
Thank you, John, if I may. Oh, there's, I see.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Nixon. I was quite slow in raising my hand.
All right, all right. Well, thank you, John. Before I answer that question, greetings to all. Sorry, I'm not as good as John. I have not memorized all the greetings yet. I hope at the end of this I will, so. But anyways, seeing this question, I quickly think of two main devices. The cellphone, Kai's cellphone, which Bob installed the software, the hacking software, and the computer at the library, which will also include the desktop, the CPU. So those three devices quickly come to my mind. So be interested to hear additional devices from the other colleagues. Perhaps Tupu has some more in our minds. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nixon. Tupu?
Thanks. Yeah, I'll just jump in on that. And I agree, the laptop, Kai's laptop, Bob's phone, the library computer, and I'd add also Marie's phone to that. Yeah, those are the devices that I can think of at the moment.
Very good. Are there any, can anybody think of anything else that might be of use in a digital sense?
In a, oh, sorry, I just, what do you mean in a digital sense?
So it may not necessarily be a computer as we think of it, but other sources of digital evidence that might be of value?
Banking account transactions from Bob's account to prove that payment from explicit.com. And his payment, oh, no, I'm sorry, just the payment from explicit.com. There would be... Yeah, maybe just that at the moment.
Not very good.
We have a raised hand from Alakizi. Alakizi, did you want to jump in? You might have to unmute yourself. There we go.
Oh, sorry about that. Just an addition to the... Just an addition to all the devices, I think. One of the digital senses. If the library has some, any kind of camera, like a CCTV camera, then it's going to be useful to pinpoint the time, especially with the time that Bob used that, that setting computers to access to the website that he was sending, sending the, or sold the nude photo of Maria.
Excellent. Good, good point. I, I, ARS, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm Bull and good morning from Fiji. Thank you, Mr. John, and the rest of the members for organizing this. I was thinking, if we have some connection through the, if I was investigating this matter from Fiji, if I have some connection to some international law enforcement agencies or a law enforcement portal with the Facebook, perhaps execution of some warrants or other international legal instruments to explicit.com to see if those pictures were there on the site, also to the Facebook, because that's the medium that's been used to post this pictures. Definitely Maria's phone, that is the source of the nude pictures that we are talking about here.
Now, that takes long. Thank you for that contribution, everybody. One of the, one of the, the reason the CCTV camera footage is a really interesting one, and often we get easily trapped into thinking digital evidence is the computer or the phone. The CCTV camera is a critical piece because it's the hardest thing in the cyber investigations is to confirm who was at the keyboard at the time the offence took place. And in this case, we have video footage or CCTV footage of that very moment. And that's, that's a really good reminder to us to make sure that we we don't get too focused on those traditional phone, laptop, desktop, computer-type digital devices because those cameras can hold some very, very valuable information and in fact can be absolutely critical to bridging the gap between who was doing the thing on the keyboard in the actual online event. So very well done, everybody. You picked up all of the main points there. I have a second kind of warm-up question. In terms of any other, and we already had ARS pick that up, so well done to him. This, what other assets or digital footprints or digital accounts or media do you think are worthy of investigating? We've had the Facebook account, you mentioned the explicit.com account. What other online accounts or assets, digital assets, do you think that we would need to look into using the tools that we have at our disposal and using international assistance and cooperation? So again, like to pass over to the group to make any suggestions.
We have Gazeiro Rakedo who has raised his hand, and IAS. So we might go with Gazeiro and then IAS. Gazeiro, are you there? Could you unmute? I think we might be having a little bit of a technical difficulty there. In the meantime, I think we might pass to IAS. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I was thinking to see the internet service providers that are providing this service and perhaps look for the data assessment under the accounts these two have from the internet service providers, and also to do some inquiries at the library, also to see if there's any record of Bob going to the library and logging the computers there.
Yeah, very good point. Again, that is, that is critical in bridging the gap between the real world and the online. So to have a, you know, a login event or some sort of verification of identity at the library is really valuable. Gazeiro, have you, have your hand up? Have you got something to contribute?
I think we might still be having technical difficulties, sorry.
Yeah. Do we, do we go to Malakai? Am I pronouncing that right?
Yep.
How, what would you like to suggest?
I would like to add on what my Fijian call the bug, as I already mentioned. I think one of the digital assets, I think would, a source of evidence would be the the software, the hacking software that Bob used. I wish we can talk with the, you can find possible means if it's connected with the software developer to get information from that hacking software. Thank you.
That's a, that's a very, very good point, Malakai. That's a critical point in this, in this investigation is the type of software that was used by Bob. Was it something that he has created himself? Is it something that he has just purchased from a website or a, you know, wherever he may have got that from? That may lead to other areas of investigation as well. So yeah, very well done. That's a very important part of it. IAS, did you have another?
I think Malakai read my mind. I was also about to talk about the software that he had installed to retrieve all the passwords that was on Kai's device.
Very good.
We have Tupu.
Can I just add on as well? Also, maybe already covered it in question one, but looking into various Facebook accounts, those messages between her and Kai's deleted account. Obviously, I think she definitely still have her copies of those messages. And also, since the photo, the nude photos that were taken, she took them on her phone, so she would definitely have the metadata about the photo. So that's also probably something to look into. I was just wondering, I have a question about IAS's contribution, about the ISPs. Someone can help with this. But here in Tonga, we only have two service providers. This is the national service providers, did you saw in your call. Does IAS mean to contact those national service providers? And if so, what kind of information would be available from our scenario, from these service providers, since the service they were using is an international service, Facebook? I think explicit.com is something international. Yeah. So just putting that out there. Just curious.
Sure. No, that's a good question, Tupu. Thank you for raising that. I'd like, if you don't mind, IAS, would you like to take the first go at answering, responding to Tupu?
Yes, thank you Tupu for asking that question. You know, these guys would be using some sort of internet, and they would have an account with the service providers. So if you execute a search warrant to the service providers, if you have identified either they're using the data from either Digicel or whatever service provider is there, and they will be able to tell you who holds that account. So you know, it will narrow it down to Bob, that he has used that with IP address to link it to the person.
Great. Thank you, IAS.
Question?
Sorry, I might just jump into, I guess I was unable to unmute, so I'll just read out what he's written in the chat. My contribution is only how he received the money, if he was using Western Union or another mode of receiving money from explicit.com.
Again, that's a very important, it's a very important consideration to have. If you have financial transactions that are taking place, that is often a very reliable, solid source of connection of two individuals. It will tend not to do things with a financial motivation and give it to somebody else. So for the most part, where people are using money transfers, it is for their own benefit, and it ties them very, very tightly to that, to that activity. So thank you, Gazeiro. That's a very, very valuable, a very valuable insight. I just wanted to very quickly just touch on the scenario itself. In terms of at this point, who do we think is, are the individuals who are potentially facing charges? Go ahead, Tupu.
So definitely Bob, and it's not clear from the scenario whether he also, he's the one who created the software, the hacking software, or whether it's someone else. So if it is someone else, then whoever that other person is who made the software. So those two persons. And yeah, I note that the question, in the question, she said not to charge Kai and Maria. So yes, they're out of, they're not, I'm not allowed to charge them, I guess.
You wanted to charge Kai as well, right?
I mean, it's an interesting point of discussion. We have a 17-year-old engaging with a 15-year-old producing nude material. Now, the age of consent in New Zealand is 16. The age of consent in New Zealand is sixteen, so Maria is under that age of consent.
Yes.
So there are, there will be clearly very different rules in in each of our nations around. Where that liability lies. I think from a a public interest sense from purely from a New Zealand perspective. In this case, Maria is the victim, even though she has created that content in the in the context of the relationship with their partner. It would be very, very unlikely that any agency in New Zealand would would look to. Criminalize the actions of Maria in this particular scenario. So while it's a, it's an important thing to consider and I would. Encourage everyone to make those appreciations as you're going through these scenarios. There is also that public interest in in victim. Uh, victim impact kind of consideration as well. Um, Elma, you have raised raised your hand. Can I your contribution?
Yeah, um. Tupac said what I wanted to say, but just to add on. It's sort of like a question, what about explicit dot com? Is there a possibility of finding out who owns that? And then consider. Them as. Part of this as well and getting them charged?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, that's a, that's a, that's a very good point. I know. There have been, and and again, we come back to the differences in what the laws are in different nations and. I think if we take from this scenario that explicit dot com is is not. Uh, Oceania based, it's it's based in another country outside of the jurisdiction of Oceania. I know that from uh from real, the the real world, there has been cases where. Uh, website owners have been um held accountable and certainly in the US court for posting material. That they don't have consent for. So there will be certainly the potential for that as raising that as a as a potential avenue for further. Matters, but again, that is a, it's probably a a referral out to another agency to the jurisdiction that explicit dot com are based in and. The information provided to them for further action, so. I think it's a, it's a, again, a very important thing to consider and to look at if if the availability is there, if they're in a. In a jurisdiction that non non friendly or non cooperative, it may create some. Some slight difficulties, but that is certainly something valuable to consider. So I also, did you have a another comment to add in?
Yes, if if you look at the 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 victim, Maria sees under the legal age fifteen. And like my friend Alma has said, definitely explicit dot com. And I I know. All over the country, the law enforcement agencies will. Uh, provide that support because of victims, no picture is circulated. For matter, any agency, there will be support. Definitely yes, uh, to consider. Charges against exclusive, exclusive dot com through mutual assistance. From Oceania to wherever that that uh, that's this, explicit dot com is hosted. I was thinking for Kai, although there are clear instructions like uh, one of my friends has said that not to charge, but. In he's in possession, if you read the scenario, he is previously, they have shared nude pictures. He's in possession of uh. Uh, exclusive, exclusive photographs of the underage. The legal age there and for in our country, definitely would be, it'd be offence to have that.
So that's that's coming back to the the information. Prior prior to the involvement of Bob where they had shared material to one another. Um, again, it would come back to each of our nation's legislative frameworks and. A kind of prosecution policies around whether or not Kai would be considered for for a charge of possession of that sort of material. So. Now, thank you for that, that input. I think there was a, Lauren, was there a comment in the chat?
Yes, yeah, um, again, from Gazeo, which I'll read out. One of the digital assets, which I believe would definitely help is to take a look at the library computer. If the computer is part of a network, then I believe that the network devices such as a switch might have a record of data sent out and received. Hence, if the library's computers are monitored, who who is using them and at which time. I believe they might connect Bob to being the person communicating with Maria, just a thought.
And a very good one. Yeah, absolutely. Again, it depends on. The configuration of the library connection, network and setup. If they, if they do connect or collect all of the the data that's transmitted through. There would be some some real valuable information in there. Uh, even from a connection point of view, we we've come back to tying Bob to that location, which is 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 really important. So. Uh, no, very good point, Gazeo. Thank you. Tupac, did you have a question?
Uh, just another comment on whether to charge Maria and Kai, I mean, from the prosecutorial. Side, you'd always consider who's going to witness for your case if you end up charging everyone. So in this scenario, of course, you take them, take them both aside and use them as witnesses.
But it's a very good point. If if we are hoping to. To focus the prosecution on the 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 illegal activity that has happened. And we want witnesses to to testify to that. If we're charging them as well, then it it may get a bit tricky to. Solicit or get that that witness information to sustain our case. So that's a very good point. Yep. Um, and I think before we move on to um, the breakout room, I ask if we have one more question and then we can move into the next phase. I asked, did you?
Oh, sorry. I yes. Sorry, yes, go ahead.
And I think I wrongly raised my hand. Sorry for that.
Sorry, no problem.
Okay, so I have a a question, perhaps everybody can help me with this. So how far can we go as charging Kai? Let's see if we assume some of us want wants want to charge Kai. And given that the information revealed were through invasion of privacy. Can, how can we use evidence uh revealed from his phone? Uh, that especially regards to those nude photos of an underage. Even these photos were obtained through. Starting from invasion of privacy. Just a a question for all, maybe.
Yeah. So so in responding to that, I think there is probably, there are probably two. Two sort of quite separate. Events that have taken place. Yeah, one is the exchange of files or photos between Maria and Kai during their relationship. And then there's the interaction of Bob who's come in and. You know, solicited more images from her and then then pass those on and share those out to the rest of the world. So. If we look at those, both of those in isolation. Given the offense sheets that we we have and the the different offenses that we are looking at. We can certainly look at sets of offenses for for both of those behaviors. So from an investigative space, I would look to have them as two separate events effectively. So looking at the the activities. In this, in the context of the relationship between Kai and Maria. And then the the activity of Bob as a as a separate kind of separate case effectively. Even though there is a, there's a connection between the two, so. Um, no, very, very good points and thank you all for your for your contributions. That's that's really helpful. I haven't. I can't think of anything that you've that has been missed, so very well done to everybody. Uh, so what we're going to do is have um. A breakout now, so we're going to drop into a couple of breakout rooms where you're able to discuss. The the process. So effectively. I want you to consider in your, in during this breakout room. That you've just joined the investigation as a senior investigator and you've been assigned to this particular case. Based on the conversations that we've had around the digital evidence that's available. Come up with, come up with a list of the offenses that could be in play. So we're going to have two, Lauren's going to facilitate breaking you all into into separate separate rooms. And my understanding is that you have been sent a list of offenses. Is that right, Lauren? So these are effectively the. Uh, consistent set of offenses that align with the Budapest Convention kind of guidance around cybercrime investigations and offenses. So if we if we use those as our as our basis of our jurisdiction. We can, we can have that discussion. So what will happen is we will just break away. I'll pop into both of the rooms at different times to 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 answer any questions you may have or to to help. Uh, the conversations move on. Um, it would be great if when we come back to feedback, we may have a. Uh, someone, someone from the group. To volunteer or forced into reporting back to the group. Um, and then we can get some feedback on those on those discussions. So. I think. This is an opportunity to share. It's not a, this isn't a test. There's no grading behind this, so. There are no wrong answers. Um, there are no wrong questions and. In fact, one thing I was told that the only wrong question is the one that you have, but don't ask. So uh, there's a really good opportunity to to bounce ideas off one another and and come to these conclusions. So. Lauren, if I can ask for the breakout rooms to 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 start up?
Yep. Um, so now everyone, you should receive an invitation to join a breakout room. I think you'll need to accept that when it pops up on your screen. And then we will split you into two groups of roughly equal sizes and you'll be randomly placed into those groups. So one of you will be with me to describe, write down what's discussed and the other will be with my colleague Mariana. So please stand by, I'll create the breakout room now.
So we've, we've, we've all come back to the uh, to the main room. Um, I I think from looking at. Looking at both of the groups, we may not have finished all of those questions, which I think is a good sign because we're getting lots of conversations and we're getting some. Some really good exchange of ideas going through there. Uh, I think for for both groups, we had made a start on looking at the. The elements of the offense. Um, so looking at how, what are the things that were necessary for us to prove? To to get. To get a successful action or successful conviction. So we were looking at what those. Those elements were. Are we able to just get some feedback from each of the groups on the conversations that you've had, just summarizing? Uh, the the questions as far as we've 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 got. So we have someone from group one. Uh, who would like to feedback to the group there, the nature of their discussions?
I'll just pop up the notes that we had from group one, but if anyone would like to speak to them.
Thanks, Mariana.
Thank you. Not I might nominate someone for the cause. Any takers from group one to speak to what we discuss? Uh, Nixon, you're the first person I can see. Would you be willing to talk about what we discussed in our breakout?
Okay, good. Thank you. I thought I saw Malachi's hands, so. But anyways, sure, sure. So this is, this is the one you shared on right now, right? Question one, question two, right? Okay, all that well. Let me just find the question. Okay, okay. So what are the possible offenses that may have been committed? We discussed a few offenses, not few, but we, I think we touched on the most relevant ones. We have illegal access. And you misuse of uh. Device. And computer related fraud and offenses relating to child pornography. So those are like four main ones that we touched on. And so. We talk about illegal access, the fact that Bob shared password from Kai's phone and that came access to someone else's information instead of illegal access. Given that that information, those information were, you know, obtained through illegal and without consent. He hacked them, basically Bob hacked them, intruded privacy. Bob can be charged with a misuse of device due to acting. Bob could be charged with installing the programs to Kai's laptop. Uh, it changed the computer, the the program. And the software that he downloaded. Um, offenses of child pornography with Bob selling the nude pictures of minor to explicit dot com. That in that really touched on Article Six, which talk about their production, a sale of, you know. Having to distribute the information online and. And then question two, we also, you know, talk about the devices and and the platform. So we. You know, in our earlier discussion, starting off this morning, we talked about the computer at the library, the cell phone device. Belonging to the the girl, the. Kai's phone and we talk about the platforms of Facebook, we. Yes, and you know, physical devices, we we do not limit to include the CPU, which will have, you know. The storage of downloaded uh photos and also not forgetting the library CCTV, which, you know, will point out who. Who enters, especially we're looking at Bob, whether he enters the library that particular day. And. Uh, yes, and Facebook, especially not Facebook uh platform. Not forgetting and especially also the whatever, I mean, that uh program that was installed, so. So thank you, group. If I missed anything, please jump in and add add more to that. I I hope I catch some of the gist of what we discussed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nixon, for letting me pull up on you. Moving over to breakout room two.
Could we volunteer from from group two to to just summarize the discussions?
Okay, so I'm now displaying. The outcomes of our our discussion. Would anyone like to speak to this? This was a really interesting discussion with a lot of practical. Just uh recommendations, but I think we decided that all of the charges were relevant, the potential offenses were relevant, but. Some in the group felt that Article Two and Article Eight were the strongest charges to take forward. So would anyone like to speak to why? Why we decided that? I ask you, you might have had some thoughts on this point. Would you like to to discuss that?
The charges, some of the group members decided that all. Uh, the charges see on Article one, not Article. Two, six, eight and nine are relevant, but there was some discussion around that. You know, to to overload the charges and to not to overload the charges and to base our our charges. Based on the evidence that we have that on the prospect of securing a conviction. One was Article Two, the illegal access, you can see on the slide. Listen, the accessing of Kai's laptop without permission. Person, the accessing of Kai's laptop without permission. The illegal access is evident. Uh, the use of the software that we have seen, the elements, uh. For any offense, so we need to have a person and we have Bob, or we have evidence that he's the one who was accessed it. And he had the intent of obtaining computer access, this is the password without the, the consent. And Article Six, we said it was tricky. Uh, did Bob, uh, had that software? Did he produce it or did he uh, manufacture it or did he procure it from somewhere? So that's why we thought that charges may not be that strong. Uh, to hold, to secure conviction, perhaps more detailed. Uh, investigation may allow us to have the charges. Uh, Article Eight, yes, we agreed. Um, it was a computer-related fraud. There was loss of data. We. Facebook account of Bob was deleted. Uh, we have that. And then there was, there was monetary reward that uh, Kai had received from the explicit. Dot com for uh, posting those uh. Nude pictures on uh, the, the explicit dot com. So that's what we thought about, maybe. Other team members wanna add on?
Thanks, Ayaz. I might just also add that um, more information or. Some, some people thought that more information was required to determine whether or not what the situation was with Article Two. Um, I think Tupai, you had some thoughts on that. Did you wanna elaborate?
Um, with, yeah, just illegal access. The point that we left the group chat. On was on the meaning of computer system, whether that could um, extend to a Facebook account. Um, so there's two possible scenarios. Kai's um, unlawful. Um, access to the laptop and then also gives unlawful access to the Facebook account. Yeah, that's, I guess that's all I will add at this.
That's a, that's a great, great work, everybody. Um, I think we've, we've had a lot of the really important points. Um, ac- across identifying the offenses and identifying. The, the thinking around, not, not just saying the offense, but considering why we're thinking about a particular offense. So, um, well done. That is an interesting question about whether or not an account, uh, i- is a, is a computer system or a network or whatever it might be. Um, I think there are opportunities, again, you mentioned a couple of different um. Charges. So there's, it doesn't have to be the single charge. It can be the illegal access of the device by using the hacking software. But also using the passwords harvested from that to access the Facebook. So. I would, I would think that in most cases that would sustain um, that charge. So. Uh, and especially when you think about uh, the, the financial benefit that's come across with that, I think. Um, that's a, that's a really good point. The only thing that's not clear, I don't think from. The, in relation to uh, the Article Nine charges. Is whether or not Bob was aware of Maria's age. So um, whether or not there is a, an element in. That charge to knowingly produce or knowing that the person is underage. Um, whether that's a, whether that's a valid assessment or something to consider. Um, in relation to those offenses. So that might be something to, to think about. Yeah, think about moving forward as well. Um. So I guess what we'd like to do uh, now is if we just push on, I think, as I say, yeah, that was, that was a, a great. Great effort from everybody. I think we, as I say, we hit. A lot of the really important points of those offenses and the, the considerations around those offenses being the, the likely person responsible. We've had some really good discussions on the principles behind uh, charging and behind uh. You know, the, the prosecution process. So not only are we touching on the, the digital evidence, we're also looking at the legal system approach as well. So. That's, that's fantastic. So um, our next breakout room. Is to look at. The strategy that we need to consider as the investigation team. Uh, to, to get a successful outcome, a successful prosecution for this matter. So what we wanna do is to try and develop an understanding of the steps that we need to follow to obtain the evidence that we need. Um, there are a couple of questions that you'll see on the screen um, there. And I think there's a, a particular uh, question there for the prosecutors in, in the group. In relation to any uh, issues that may impact admissibility at trial. Um, so in order to do this, we need to consider. You know, what devices there are, what uh, digital assets are available, how we go about accessing them. So. I think if we can roll into those uh, breakout rooms now, um, and we can have a. An ongoing conversation around how that, uh, how that second, um, second phase will, will take place.
Okay, um, Mariana's going to create the breakout room, so please stand by again.
Well, welcome back, everybody. Um, I, again, uh, from the, this, the short time that I spent in both of those groups, it was a. Healthy discussions going on and uh, it would be great if we could call on someone from uh, group one to uh. To give us a bit of insight into the, the conversation that they've had. I've got, we've got Mariana's um. Record keeping up, up on the screen right now. So if we could call from somebody on, on, in group one to uh. Uh, to feedback on to, on the, on the discussion. Okay, here, go ahead, sit.
Okay, thank you. Uh, our, our group was coming with uh, some sort of answer to this question. For, for question one, where, where and how did Kai and Mari exchange picture? We just come up with the service. Uh, that Maria and Kai used the internet service like Facebook, especially Facebook Messenger. So there's. Two, everything source that we have to look at is Facebook profile account and also uh, Face- Facebook Messenger service. To, to, to get that um, uh, evidence of, of uh. Of the time and date when they exchanged the message on uh, Facebook Messenger. So we, we think about the photograph on the phone as well, some information about account uh, phone itself. And also the forensic, forensic analysis of the phone may provide access to some information. So we, the devices, we, we think that um. Uh, the, whatever devices that they used to access to uh. To contact the exchange of uh, uh, the photo or that involve in uh, sending the picture. Uh, which devices are relevant? Uh, we come, come up with Mari- Mari- Maria's phone, library computer and also the. CCTV, CCTV camera at the library. So. Who are the witnesses? Uh, except for Marius and Kai and Bob, we, we come up with a. Whoever the people gonna be involved uh, in the process of investigation, especially when, when they handling evidence. They, they, they have to be considered to be under witness. For, for example, like, for police, we have, uh, we have a investig- investigation team. There's, there's a lot of people involved, especially like, uh, there's some people can, they took the photograph of the, of the evidence, some people they. They, they, they are the exhibit keeper or the, the handler, the exhibit. Before it's been uh, handed over to, to uh, to the forensic uh, people like that. So they, they also have to be uh, a part of the witness. So what kind of evidence will you need to prove the off- the offense and what do you need to prioritize? Um, we, we come up with uh, just a lot of, of points, but for, for. For con- for, uh, con- concerning with our priorities is just depend of. Whatever the most important evidence you have to, uh, you have to uh, to obtain first because. It have a, a chance to be deleted or been uh, uh, disposed of. There's the most im- uh, important evidence you had to, uh, you had to locate it first and leave the. Whatever evidence has been uh, is really hard to be destroyed. For example, like. Uh, we put Mari- Marius phones, the first, uh, is part of our most important evidence to get because it's gonna be contained a photo and been sent to. To Bob. But the information from Facebook's gonna be uh. Sometimes it's gonna be the last, um, uh, last, uh, place to reach out to get the information from. Because it's hard, it's, it's not gonna be disappeared or been deleted or something like it. So for question number five, what, what domestic international industry partners would we need to work with for preservation request? Normally for Facebook, they have their own online portal for law enforcement to, to do the uh, preservation request. And also uh, requesting for, uh, for record, but they only provide, they only provide the subscriber information. So for domestically, you can reach out to the um, the library. Uh, for, for the, for a copy of a camera, for she, uh, for uh, library, for the. Uh, library CCTV to get the, the time that Bob used the library computer. But um. Mostly uh, for sure that library, if, if the library is, uh, whether it's a private or a public library, they might be asked for. A court order or a search warrant for you to be able to obtain the uh, information to, if they didn't try to. Or it, or that piece, piece of information uh, of evidence that you try to get. So we've gone to number six, during the discussing, please identify and a, any issue to consider and address at this stage. Which may relate to admiss- uh, admissibility of the aim, just at trial. So uh. We, 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 we ran out of time to, to answer the, the last question, but. Uh, I think this, this type of question is really good for lawyers. But I have a look at, um, I think the most important. Uh, uh, things for any evidence to be, to be at, at least upon court is to make sure to uh. To make sure they've been, uh, this has, has been uh, uh. Uh, documented properly and also handled properly. And the best way to do that is uh. Whenever it's very short, the short, the short chain of uh, of that piece of evidence to be calling uh, to the court. It's better than try, than passing a long, a long chain, uh, chain of evidence. I think that's uh. Uh, our, our last, last, and uh, this are the answer for our last question if, hopefully if uh. Someone uh, want to add on to our um. To our, uh, answers, well, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I like you, Seal. Thank you for uh, feeding back and thank you for your contribution to group one. Uh, group two, can we have someone uh, feed, feed to the, the wider group their findings?
Uh, sorry, my notes are a lot messier than Mariana's bringing one. But I will just note that um, in the interest of time, the group decided to go with uh, slashing out Article Eight on computer-related fraud. Um, but I might ask somebody from the group to give an overview of um, how the discussion went. Uh, would anyone like?
At the same time, I will jump in there and try and summarize our group discussion. So like Lauren said, we decided to go with computer-related fraud and answer the questions. Um, just focusing on um, that, that offense. So in terms of the devices. Yes, the relevant devices. Um, we looked at Kai's laptop, the library computer. Uh, Maria's phone, uh, Bob's phone and CCTV from the library. And you see there in the notes that the, the reason why you wanted a library computer. Um, because that's where the data transfer, I mean, we could get information. Uh, the financial transaction um, information from there. Um, through. A search of we- websites that he was access, accessing at that time. Also Kai's laptop. Uh, yeah, that's where the software was installed. Maria's phone was used to take the phone, the photos. Um, so on. Uh, the relevant witnesses would be. Yes, um, definitely Kai. Um, and also someone from the library, um, IT, whether that's IT personnel from the library. Or the librarian, um, to give evidence about whether they saw. Uh, Bob at that time, um, which computer he logged into, the IT person could. Um, talk about the data that was extracted from the computer. Um. Another important witness would be our digital forensic um. Analyzer from that, totally, uh, sorry, totally, that the police use or um. Who was actually in the, the police, or police force. Um, required evidence. All right, did I cover all of the witnesses there? I think so. Yeah. Um, in terms of required evidence, um, just extracting data from. Yes, in terms of extracting data, we had an interesting discussion about. Actually, no, not a discussion, but just um, ensuring that the data, when it's extracted. Uh, the, the reason why we would use a, a digital forensic expert is to ensure that the data. It's not altered in any way from the time it was extracted to a time that it is admitted into court as evidence. Um, also that expert would establish from the data. Um, the sites that were visited by Bob. Um, sorry, there's also another note here, but. Uh, Maria is an important witness as well and Kai as well. They would confirm, sorry, definitely Kai. He's a crucial witness in proving this article, this, this offense that um, he would say. Uh, something to the effect that his account was deleted on so-and-so dates and um, to prove. Yeah, that element of the offense. Um, and also um. In procuring an economic benefit, that was the, that's the last element of the offense. Um, so again, we'd be looking at financial institutions. Uh, while police would have to make further inquiries to establish which financial institution. Um, Kai was receiving that money, sorry, Bob, Bob was receiving um, money from explicit dot com from. Um, to establish that. Uh, yes, we also had another point there about Bob's phone. Oh, um, whether or not the digital forensic analyst could um, get some geolocation information from that phone. Um, perhaps Bob took his phone with him. Um, at that time that he, he took the um. He installed the software onto Kai's laptop or at the time that he uh, deleted Kai's. Uh, Facebook account at the library. So that would only enhance and support our, our case that, you know. It was Bob who deleted the account and, yeah, who was accessing the library computer at that time. Uh, we discussed uh, preservation requirements. Uh, that was in relation to. Question. Number.
Question.
I think, yeah, yes. No, sorry, number five, four or five. I think, so we considered whether, yeah, we considered whether to um, contact Facebook. Uh, in terms of preservation requests. Um, and there was a, you know, back in. You really have to just weigh it out, whether it's uh, really. Crucial evidence that you're gonna be getting from them or whether the evidence you have. crucial evidence that you're gonna be getting from them or whether the evidence you have or that police already have is enough. Sorry, guys, if I missed any points that you guys made.
No, sorry, my, my notes are a bit messy, so we will tidy them up and circulate to the class afterwards. Don't worry.
That was a also interesting point in, in terms of cooperation, international cooperation, instead of going to Facebook, which you might take very long to get logging information, which is traffic data. You could also go through FBI, I know Fiji has their FBI counterparts there. There's also Australian Federal Police, New Zealand Police, who work very closely with our police in the, in the Pacific. They could also assist in, in gathering evidence. Yes, the very last question, sorry, just to skip. The very last question was in terms of admissibility and we touched very briefly on hearsay evidence, knowing that Facebook doesn't give evidence in a court, in a courtroom. Um so that's a potential challenge, but I agree definitely with Alex Seal in terms of the authenticity and establishing a chain of evidence and making as short as possible. That's all from me and Alku. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Look, thank you very much, everybody, for that really thorough and, and depth analysis of, of this particular case. And I think you've, you, I have to say, you've done a really, really fantastic job, but both groups. Um and as, as a bigger group, you've done a great job in, in contributing and bringing your ideas to, to this conversation. And just one point to, to sort of always remember and be in a child exploitation case or one of the, a case like this. This, this type of offending is incredibly uh challenging and distressing to, to the victims, in this case Maria. Uh so we, we should always have a, a victim-centric mind to when we're doing this type of work. Um and it's really important to consider any, any support services that we may be able to, to direct Maria towards um and her family as well. Family is gonna be victims of this as well, secondary victims. Um so how we, how we look after their well-being and their welfare moving forward. The other point is how can we get her images taken off explicit dot com so that she's not haunted by these for the rest of her life? So that well-being and welfare consideration, I think, is a, is a really important uh point for these types of investigations where a victim is identified. So I just wanted to, to sort of end on that. And I think the, the training that you guys have done has certainly clearly worked. You've, you've all done a superb job today and conscious of time and conscious of how important everybody's time is. So I'd like to, to wrap the case study up right now. Uh Lauren can share my contact details if any of you have any questions or if I can help in any way with anything real world, please, I would love to hear from you if I can help out. Uh so again, all I can say is, is thank you to everyone. Um really appreciate your participation today and, and thank you to Mariana and Lauren for facilitating the session. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, John, and thank you, everyone, for joining together and having such a fantastic discussion. This has been a great first session and we thank you for making the time to come today. Um with that, we'll wrap it up. And as John said, let you get to the rest of all the work, I'm sorry, but to say, but hope you have a lovely weekend and we will be in touch early next week about Week Six and the case study sessions that are coming up. Thank you and hope you have a good day.
Thank you all. Good day.
Thank you, guys.